Either or.
It's great.
So I am going to start the bu- oh, it is a hearing, it's not a workshop. Budget hearing, thank you. So for the Town of Oakland, please stand for the pledge and the invitation. I pledge allegiance.
Thank you so much. Father God.
Invisible with the.
Our heads. Father God, thank you once again for entrusting us with your town. I ask that you give us wisdom and discernment. Uh, help us make the best decisions for our town and for our citizens. Uh, may we honor you and always say this evening in your glorious name, Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, fair.
Go ahead.
May we remember and keep in our hearts all of those who perished nine eleven.
Yes, amen. Thank you, Mary.
Knew I didn't sit down for it.
All right, um. Elise? Yes, so roll call Commissioner McMullin.
Present.
Commissioner Pollan.
Here.
Commissioner Ramos.
Present.
Mr. Mayor Satterfield.
Present.
Ms. Scott.
Here.
We're all here. All right, so, um, item number two is the budget. We want to approve the tentative millage rate for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Uh, and we'll move on to approving the tentative budget for the same fiscal year. And approve the final budget public hearing date. So, um, I am, I guess I'm going to turn it over to you, Andy.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Mayor, members of the Town Commission. This evening, you're going to be adopting, as the mayor mentioned, approving the tentative millage rate for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, the budget and then the, uh, final budget hearing, uh, which will be September twenty-sixth at six-thirty at our next Town Commission meeting. I do have a presentation this evening, as you remember back in July, we did a pretty thorough explanation of, of the budget and everything that's inside of the budget document itself. We talked about the capital improvements program, showed you some pictures of the types of capital that the town was looking to, uh, purchase in the long-term plan. And we also, uh, went over, you know, more specific line items in this fiscal year's budget, talked about the millage rate. So, uh, the town has already, the Town Commission is already seeing sort of the, the proposed budget, it is posted online. Uh, we've had since July to really receive any comments, the trim notices have gone out. Um, so at this point, it's kind of just an overview of, of the budget, uh, from the from a larger perspective. Uh, and I have a quick presentation I'll go through and then answer any questions that the mayor and town commission may have, or members of the general public that are here this evening. The public hearing, um, to present the Town Commission and the residents, the proposed millage rate, rollback rate, as I just mentioned, and the tentative budget for fiscal year twenty-two, four, that is the reason why we are here this evening. Kind of the overview of, of the presentation, um, and let me see if I can get this. Yeah, can you, do you mind going to the next slide? So this is just sort of an outline of what the commission is going to be requested to do tonight. We've already, the mayor's already talked about that as an agenda item. So what I want to jump right into is the millage rate, um, the historical millage rate for the Town of Oakland to kind of give the, sort of, a perspective on, on the millage rate that we are requesting the Town Commission, uh, approve in this upcoming fiscal year. Um, if you'll see, it's, uh, back in twenty sixteen, the millage rate was six-point-seven-five. Um, and that is six-point-seven-five, uh, dollars on every thousand dollars of assessed value that your property or commercial property is worth. Um, you're taxed, uh, uh, six dollars and seventy-five cents, basically what the millage rate is. So if you go through, uh, the first three years from twenty sixteen to twenty eighteen, there was no change in the millage rate. Everybody clap, we can all clap along to the budget here. So, uh, so in twenty eighteen, the Town Commission reduced the millage rate to six-point-six-five, and then the following year in twenty-twenty reduced it to six-point-five. Town's been hovering around there for the last, uh, since twenty-twenty-one for the last two years. Um, and then in twenty-twenty-two, it was reduced again, and twenty-twenty-three it was reduced again. And this fiscal year, um, as you can see, every two years, on average, the town seems to maintain the existing millage rate. This is sort of where we're at this year of maintaining the existing millage rate. And I think the reason why that is, that happens is at some point the town needs to, uh, can't continue to reduce, um, revenues for the town and increase the demand of the services. But if you can see from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty-four, the town has actually reduced the tax rate for the residents. So I, I commend the council for that. Um, next slide is kind of talks about the millage rate in, in, in general, and also shows you what the rollback rate is. Um, as the, the proposed millage rate for next year is, we're proposing it as six-point-three, which is the same, as I said, as, as the current fiscal year that we're in. And then if you look at what the rollback rate is, is something we have to do for the, for the trim notice, is show the residents what millage rate would generate the same amount of revenue as the existing fiscal year. So our revenues from ad valorem tax is up about eight-point-oh-four percent with adopting the same millage rate, which will allow us to provide a better service, it'll allow us to deal with the cost of inflation. Um, it'll, you know, thing, this prices go up and, and it's more expensive to do business, and so it's an eight-point-oh-four percent just on simply the ad valorem uh, tax itself, that we adopt the same millage rate for this year. Um, that is really the entire discussion on the actual millage rate. Now, I don't know if you guys would like me to, there was no public comment, I'll, I'll turn it back over to the mayor, and then if you'd like me to continue on with the budget, I don't know if we have to vote for that separately, I'll leave that.
Actually, you vote for each of these separately, correct?
Yes, we should vote for each separately.
And I'll make sure I open a public hearing.
So our, our budget is balanced with six-point-three mills. Um, and so if any change to the, the millage rate this evening, the town staff would have to go back and, and make cuts to some type of services, some type of expense if we were able to do that. So I'll turn it back over to the mayor.
Okay, um, so let's get a, uh.
First word.
I don't know where my brain went. Let's get them open on the table.
Rate of six-point-three mills for the Town of Oakland. I'm second up.
It's been moved in seconded, so now is there any discussion at the table about this? I will make public commentary that we've all been through this budget a couple times. So we're very familiar with it. Um, and we want to make sure that we're normal, but well. Um, I'm going to open a public hearing. You are all in voice except for one. Do we have any questions? Good, thanks. Okay, I will close the public hearing, bring it back to the table. If there are no questions, please say aye.
Aye.
No opposed. All right, Andy, you're up again.
So now we jump into the fiscal year, next fiscal year's budget, which is twenty-three, twenty-four. Uh, when it's August first, twenty-twenty-three to September thirtieth of twenty-twenty-four. Um, so now that we, the commission has adopted a tentative miller rate of six-point-three mill, we move forward in presenting a balanced budget. Um, and we'll start with the general fund, which has revenues of eight-point-five-seven-four million. Um, and that would uh, equate to also the same amount of expenditures. Um, the budget is based on a millage rate of six-point-three-zero. Um, the estimated reserves in our general fund budget this year, if approved, uh, would be, uh, approximately one-point-four million dollars. I'll just read you the number, one million, four-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars. Um, and that is because this year's budget, budget's a contingency in amount of two-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand, nine-hundred-and-forty-one dollars. So if everything goes as planned and there are no unexpected expenditures throughout the year, uh, this two-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand dollars would go to increase our general fund reserve, which if you heard at the last, uh, during the audit presentation, we have sufficient reserves. However, he would like to see us try to work on building that just a little bit to maybe, uh, for a rainy day, have plenty and ample, uh, money set aside. So this actually does a lot of different things, it funds all the town's services and the general fund, and then it also helps increase the reserves if we stick to budget, and like I said, there's no unexpected expenditure. But the, the contingency does provide a good cushion throughout the year. Um, the state revenue sharing, since the, the July meeting, um, has been updated in the revenue section of the budget that you have before you this evening. So we've gone back and, and Renee has gone back and, and gotten those updated numbers since the July meeting. Some of those did not come out until August and September, so we're able to kind of fine-tune our revenue projections as well, uh, for tonight's meeting. Some other important highlights in the general fund is we've had some increases to expenses, which is why we did not increase the millage rate this year, we just maintained it because with the increase in property value, that does provide us a little extra funds to take care of some of these increases. Because as you'll see, uh, the agreement that, that the town has with Orange County Fire Rescue increased, uh, two-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand dollars uh, per the inter-local agreement that we have with Orange County for fire and EMS services. Uh, so that is an essential service that the town could not probably afford to do on its own, to have their own department, and so that's why we contract with Orange County Fire Rescue. Budget also includes for a four-percent, uh, total adjustment for town staff. As I said, we are a smaller town and some of the neighboring communities have a little bit bigger budget. And therefore, you know, our salaries, while competitive, sometimes may just be, you know, average or mid-range, and most of the other municipalities and cities do give out a cost of living, uh, adjustment or an increase. And so we have budgeted four percent across the board for town staff. And that includes teachers at the school as well. Um, and then we've also covered the cost of the four-percent increase to employee health insurance. Uh, Renee worked hard at that this year. You know, sometimes even health insurance coverages can range from fifteen to twenty-percent increases. Uh, so we were able to work with the current carrier, which is through the Florida League of Cities, and, and they were able to actually drop it down from their original estimate to a four-percent increase, which is a, a large, if you look in our budget, it's over, uh, eight-hundred-thousand-dollar expense, um, in our budget to cover just employee alone health insurance, which is a, which is an excellent benefit for our employees as well. Um, some other things that have taken place in the general fund that have increased some of the expenses. Um, this will be a temporary increase for a year, as you know. Um, we have, uh, two long-tenured employees in our finance, and our finance manager and public works manager. Um, so we're looking to hopefully bring somebody on that can, uh, shadow and learn the position, uh, before the retirement of those two, um, excellent, uh, department heads that have, um, that, uh, have been with the town for quite some time. And so we want, we don't want to lose any of that institutional knowledge, and by, by funding this position for a year, uh, will allow for a smoother transition in two very important departments for the town. Um, something that has changed since the July meeting is, uh, we have, uh, eliminated, uh, an administrative specialist position, which was in the town manager's, um, office, um, and we have reallocated that salary to the, um, cultural center to provide additional services, uh, to keep the center open, hopefully, uh, longer. Um, that's a, become a focal point for the town and something I believe the town residents, uh, take pride in is that center, and so we want to make it available, and we want to make it, um, have some of the best programs and services, um, that there are, um, in, in, in Orange County. So there really wasn't, uh, the amount of workload in my office, so we've eliminated that, which is a sixty-thousand-dollar savings. Um, the general fund also has about a sixty-percent increase in property insurance and liability. This is just on your properties for, um, for town hall, for the facilities, for the buildings, and that's related as, it's just an insurance trend that's in the market. Eventually, though, all those hurricanes catch up to the rates, and then, um, and, and, and the laws change, and it requires these large increases, it's not just something that is happening in the Town of Oakland, it's, it's statewide. And those fluctuate, like I said, year to year. Um, we have two roof replacements that are scheduled for town hall and historic town hall, uh, in the amount of thirty-seven-thousand, five-hundred dollars that'll replace both of those buildings roofs that are over twenty-five years old. We have, uh, PD replacements of the laptops, um, which are, if you remember from the CIP presentation, our, the laptops are not meant to go into our police cars. The police officers have been doing the best they can with what they have and have not complained, uh, one bit. But if we're going to replace our, our laptops, we want to replace them with a, a product that's made for police work and made for the, for the, um, wear and tear that they receive in these, in these cars that they're on the road. So there's a twenty-thousand-dollar-per-year line item expenditure in the budget for that. And then there's also a forty-thousand-dollar upgrade, uh, for the PD RMS and dispatch, the contract that we have for Winter Gardens. It's again, the Town of Oakland, if they had their own dispatch, it would cost half a million dollars plus a year to staff it with, you know, two nine-one-one operators, twenty-four-seven time clock, and so those are the types of agreements that this commission has, has put into place to actually save the taxpayers quite a bit of money. Um, we, you know, like the, uh, interlo- you know, there's lots of interlocal agreements throughout the budget, and most of those are in place, um, to save on administration and payroll costs. So that is the general fund budget, that, that funds our day-to-day operations of the town. Uh, then we get into our utility fund budget, which is water, sewer, and solid waste, which is our, our garbage department. Those are, those are services for the town that technically can generate, um, revenue. Um, however, you know, we do a rate study, we're in the process of doing a rate study, as the mayor had asked at our last meeting, um, for water and sewer rates, and so we have a study that's done, and they forecast what's going to cost to run our utility systems, our water and sewer, what's it going to cost in the future? And how much do we need to charge to ensure that we're able to maintain our systems, uh, to, so we don't have to have large rate increases all at one time? So we do that periodically, and that, that is the types of, uh, revenues and expenses that are in the utility fund. It's called, you know, it's really an enterprise fund, um, in which I've re-categorized that in the budget more of an enterprise fund. Um, but for the, for what everybody knows here, it's sort of a, the utility fund, so. The, the budget for that is five-point-four million dollars. Um, there's going to be a projected increase in the revenue for water and the revenue for wastewater, just based on our new home construction. Not increasing the rates, that's not proposed in this budget, let me be very clear, it's just for, as we grow, those water and, uh, wastewater revenues increase. Same thing for our public works employees, our, our meter readers, uh, the guys that are out making repairs to our water and sewer lines, they are also in line for a four-percent, um, uh, increase in pay. Um, and it projected at year-end, the reserves in our utility fund budget, uh, would be about one-point-six million dollars as we finish this current budget year. So as you can see from both the general fund and the utility fund, we're looking to maintain our existing reserves, um, in both of those accounts. Um, also, in the utility fund, we have some water, uh, metering equipment, as you can see, these are for the radio read water meters. It runs about three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars a year to keep those upgraded and replaced, uh, but it saves tremendously on payroll, uh, because you don't have to go and manually inspect the meters anymore. You can do that digitally, uh, and write out either, usually write out of, uh, your vehicle, or transmits it to a certain location. Um, we have some grant stations for lift, uh, some grant funds for lift station seven, uh, half a million. And then we also have the two million dollars that was rewarded by the state legislature this year, uh, for the alternative water project. That project would be about four million dollars. Um, Public Works Director has submitted, uh, two grants, uh, to make up the difference, and we'll see what happens with those. And then hopefully we'll be able to, uh, currently, we're in the design of that, that, uh, alternative water project, um, that will help clean Lake Apopka and then provide reuse, um, to some of, to a, a large portion of our homes in, in town. Um, so that, that project will begin, hopefully, probably not in this budget, but the following budget, but design work occurred, and hopefully we'll be able to, uh, gather the funds necessary to do that project following fiscal year. The one new request that we have, really the only permanent request that we have in the budget, uh, is the utility service worker, which, as we, our homes grow, we need more police to help out with utilities, it's as simple as that. There's hydro repairs, there's all those types of things that need to be taken place when you add to the infrastructure. We move on to the impact fee budget, not going to spend a lot of time on this. Um, these are funds that, um, but, that we have to budget for every year, because if you don't budget for them and you don't spend them within a certain period of time, then they're not earmarked funds, and they come from development, and, and, uh, so you want, so every five years you have to spend, expend those funds. And so we budget for those and we use them and we need them. So we may come up with a grant project, for instance, for Sphere Park, say. What we're trying to do is leverage these impact fee dollars, because if you'll see in the general fund, there's not a whole lot of other expenses, um, to fund like garden projects. And so in order to leverage what we have, the cash we have available, we want to leverage the impact fee funds with grant funding. And a lot of times, grant funds require matches. So if we get a half a million dollar project, and we have a half a million dollars in impact fees, we don't have to take out any money and borrow any money to make those improvements. So we're going to go out to grant funding first, and just one example would be like the Sphere Park, we're looking at going after later in the year, a recreation grant, um, to fund maybe a connection, a trail connection from Longleaf, maybe tie it into the trail as well. And then there's some other improvements that they were speaking of, a fitness facility, outdoor fitness-type facility along the trail, and some other improvements that was planned for that. But we would definitely bring that back before the commission. Um, so all these funds are available to be spent, um, if they relate to new growth, it has to be related to new growth. So it can't be spent on operating services, it can't be spent on employee pay increases, health insurance. Got to be spent on projects related as a result of the new growth in town. So these funds have been earmarked, we do have the funds sitting there, um, in the account, and the budget has been, uh, drafted to that, and that budget is about five-point-three million dollars. Then we jump over to the school. Um, the school, uh, has to have their tentative budget approved in July, so our, the budget was already approved, sort of a, um, we're a budget amendment to the school board budget. We've, um, the budget for this Oakland area, uh, Oakland Avenue Charter School is six-point-six million dollars. Estimated reserves at the school, um, based on this, after this fiscal year, be about five-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand dollars. And then, as I said before, the teachers, for, for the town, the four-percent possibility of just. Adjustments from the July tentative budget. Um, there's been adjusted, adjustments, uh, in the FEFP funds, which is from the state of, the, the federal funds, which we received. And, um, so there's been an increase in those funds as well, um, based on what you saw, the tentative budget. Um, there's been additional, uh, VPK grant funds in the budget, there's an additional title, um, for grant funding in the amount of thirteen thousand dollars. Um, and there's potential VPK expenditures for grant funds, playground items, uh, playground cover, et cetera. Commissioner Satterfield is very familiar with the budget as far as the expenses in that, so if you have any questions on that, you can, you can address it to Commissioner Satterfield. Um, the Oakland Avenue Charter School, um, they've also added umbrella cover expenditures, uh, for the front of the school between twenty-five and thirty-five thousand dollars. And they look to raise money from the PTO stat, which would, it's a revenue and be an extra. So the reason they want these umbrellas out front, I guess is for shade for the students waiting, for kids waiting, kids waiting for, uh, parent pickup to keep them out of the sun, as you know, we're in Florida, and so it's a more of a health type of thing. Um, and then they adjusted the furniture expenditure line item, um, and then we're going to use some grant funds to do that. So those are the, those are the things that are going on. We have a lot of different, like I said, being that the town has the school, uh, town has the impact fee budget, has the enterprise fund budget, the general fund budget. The total budget of the town equates to about twenty-five million, nine-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand dollars. And I've kind of given you a breakdown of the different budgets there on the last slide, and, uh, that's, that's really all I have, nothing, a lot has changed since, uh, July. Um, the only thing that has changed is we've been able to fund the contingency in the general fund of over two-hundred-thousand dollars, which wasn't there in the beginning, but we were, we also received some additional estimates on revenues from the state. So, um, we, we tried our best to, uh, fund, um, everything and then try to put some money away for a rainy day. And that is all I have this evening, that is the presentation on the budget, I'll stand for any questions.
I would like to get a motion on the table. For the budget tentative.
Um, I can motion, please, on the budget, two thousand, three, four.
Any questions? Or, um, anyone who wasn't here, here, I mean, previously, we've been doing this, like, for five seconds. Uh, you know, preparing for, as we know, and. Do we have any questions at the table? All right, um, I will open a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak about the budget, now is your chance to ask some questions. Right, I'll close the public hearing.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Um, before the close of this hearing, we're required to state, uh, for the record, the date, place, and time of the final budget here.
Oh, I was doing that as a third.
Oh, yes, um, I know that we're going to take a vote on it, but we're required just to state, just so I know.
Okay. Um, we are, we have a mo- no, this is, I just have to state it for this motion, then we have to have a separate motion?
Yes, yes, unfortunately, it's a statutory requirement to make the announcement.
Um, so we are setting, uh, the second budget hearing for Tuesday, September twenty-sixth at six-thirty, right here in the meeting hall.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, so, no questions, no comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's been a lot of work that's gone into this, and, um, I will, will say that this is a pretty tight budget this year. Um, there is not a lot of room for expenditures unless we find money in grants or impact. Uh, you know, we had some unexpected expenses last year, and we are trying to be good stewards of our fiscal, um, resources. So did I, did we vote?
Yeah.
Okay, we voted, okay. See, I'm going to blame it on you, but it's really not, so.
We made a motion on the last motion.
Now we're going to make a motion on the last motion. Um, we are gonna, I needed a motion to approve the final budget public hearing date, which is September twenty-fourth.
Make the motion, approve the final budget, uh, February eighth, September.
September twenty-fourth.
All right, September what, twenty-seventh?
Moved in seconded, I'm going to open a public hearing, does anybody have a question about that? Oh, okay, bring it back to the table, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Andy, thank you, staff, this is a lot of work. So, and we appreciate it, our, um, because of the nature of this town, you know, the budgets are a lot more, um, there, there's a lot more detail in them. More things to budget for.
Uh, more than what we started.
Ninety-nine thousand dollars in the hole. Um, so anyway, uh, we, oh, it's seven o'clock, lucky there, that was perfect. All right, if nobody needs a break, I'm going to just continue on with the regularly scheduled meetings. So, um, I will open the Town Commission meeting for September eleventh at seven o'clock. We are, um, dispensing with the pledge and the invocation as we did it earlier tonight. And I would, um, ask for Elise to call this meeting toward. Okay, roll call, Commissioner McMullin.
Present.
Commissioner Pollan.
Here.
Commissioner Ramos. Mr. Mayor Satterfield.
Present.
Ms. Scott.
Here.
All right, um, our first order of business is a proclamation for Constitution Week, September seventeenth through the twenty-third. So Constitution Week, so two thousand and twenty-three, whereas September seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three marks the two-hundred-and-thirty-sixth anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to afford official recognition to this magnificent document and to its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas public law nine fifteen guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September seventeenth through twenty-third as Constitution Week. So, we, we do not have anybody here to accept it, but we will make sure that we do what we're supposed to do with it. All right, um, public forum, if there's anybody here who wishes to speak on something that's not already on the agenda, now is your chance, we ask you to keep your comments to three minutes, and, um, we'll see where we go from there. Donna, are you interested?
Yes, um, I.
Come on up.
Okay, well, I didn't know that was involved.
Yeah, you're not shocked.
Yeah.
Not shocked, no. Up here at any point. Um, I just have a question, I know there's been a comment lately about the review boxes and all of that, I didn't really know if it was going to come up in the future or now. So, you know, I've lived here many, many years, and years ago, when we asked, um, this question, it was told to. So, you know, I've lived here many, many years and years ago when we asked um this question, it was told to my husband and myself. That there was some agreement back, I don't know.
It could have been in the eighteen hundreds.
Sixties or somewhere way back there. But I think that it's time to kind of upgrade that and to look into it. And I know, you know, when we first moved in here, there weren't very many residents here, so. To make kind of sense not to have mail delivery and it's gotten to be such a hassle. On, I mean, we got this thing from the mail, we have to send all, I know, I saw that. And I'm like, I don't even know what to do anymore. And I mean, we had it under kind of control, but now we're kind of lost again.
Well, you know, and I can cut into the chase for you and I think you'll like our answer is. Irregardless of the agreements we've made in the past, something needs to be done now.
Yes.
We have another large subdivision coming in the historic section, so. We can't lean on historic section doesn't get mail deliveries. The post office box fees are never at what I have ever imagined them to be this expensive. And there are people who simply really struggle to afford that and we don't want that. But I will tell you that number one, communicating with the post office is very hard. Um, we have yet to find someone who will sit with us and help us sort through what we need to do. Um, and we've asked, we also.
You know what they say, right? Do you know what they tell the? That is you all.
I know.
And I don't really believe that. And I mean, if. My thing is I, I do understand that, you know, it used to be, well, if you want to keep the post offices, because they're not very busy, you have to have your mail delivered here, whatever. But now there's so many people, it's, it's busy all the time and.
Um, and if that, you know, unfortunately, they have all they want, but irregardless. We're at a point where we have to really stay, take a step back, figure out what our options are. We met with Dan Webster, we made a request of his office to find us a contact.
Yes.
Um, we talked to the post office master at um Winter Garden and he was like, not me, not me, not me. So we said, but who? And I believe that they pointed Andy towards the gentleman who's out on medical leave.
Correct, yep.
So have we asked if there's anybody can take his face?
Who is that?
Hang on Nancy.
Um, I don't have the letter. There was a discussion of a letter that was there.
Yeah, we.
Town was responsible.
Doesn't matter, just seems, has a lot of confusion and I know when you're working with federal, of course, I work at the lower level of governments, so I do understand that. But if there's anything we need to do, like, do I need to start making phone calls? Do we need to start doing petitions? Do we, do I need to take a, a drive to the postmaster general? I am retired, so I could do that. I mean, it needs to be done.
If, if we had to go that far, one of us would do that, but um. We are working on it. Please, no, we are working on it. Nothing is going to happen quickly with this.
I understand.
We'll stay on it. And either, any of the solutions that are out there. Have big pros and big cons. So we got to figure out what we can live with and what we can't.
And what do you all want to happen? What is your?
I don't know. We don't know because um, you know, we don't want people to have to pay these outrageous fees.
Well, it's, I mean, it, if, if nobody can produce the agreement that somebody says exists. Then by law, if we don't have home delivery, then our post office boxes should not cost anything.
Right, so is what we're trying to get to, so that we have facts in front of us. To decide what is best for the town and its residents. Um, but like I said, there are big pros, big cons, so we don't know what we want to do. But I can tell you, I know what I want to do and I want to do something about these post office box fees. I don't think it's fair if we, I, I can't see, and, and the crux of the question will become Riley Parks. If they can't take them on and post. Then we need to do something for the other. We can't have, can't have.
Right, because I mean, it's already, I do know they're out of post office boxes, so I'm, I'm guessing, I don't know. That's the reason that, you know, John's Landing, John's Lake, you know, up there, all them have. A zip code for Winter Garden.
I know.
And we don't, well, just give me a zip code for Winter Garden.
That's all we.
Trying not to have a zip code for Winter Garden. Once you're bringing up, we know, we know all of this. We have got to find the person in the box. That will help us sort through this and will help us as a commission make the right decision. I can't tell you what I want because I don't know the repercussions and I don't think anybody here does. But we know we want to fix it. That's the only thing I can tell you, but I don't think this fix comes without pain either way. Well, I think, I'm guessing there will have to be public comments and all kinds of stuff that follow whenever something's.
It'll be, yeah, it will be, it'll be discussed at a meeting. Our lawyer Stephanie will be with us um on this. To help us sort through the legal questions and all of that. You know, we'll, we'll fester Dan Webster as much as possible. And um, you know, I just want people to know, and you can carry this message back to all the people who said they were coming tonight. That.
Well, if you see my name on there, you know it's probably happening.
Well, that's why we made, and that's why we made sure that we advertised heavily about the change of the meeting date. But um, that we're working on it. We've been working on it.
Right.
Uh, it's just not anything that's going to happen quickly, but we will stay on.
Well, then I guess, you know, this won't hurt. We'll just, I'll start making my own phone calls. As, as an informational thing.
Sure, I would, anybody, anybody you can contact, that's awesome. The only thing that I would tell you is, and you can, you can do whatever you want, but petitions.
I'm not doing it.
Yeah, well, I just.
Really work.
I have concerns about petitions and everybody has a different opinion. But people sign petitions for varieties of reasons, like get away from me, I don't.
Right.
I don't want to be bothered.
And just from making phone calls to the people, I think, and see where it goes.
Right. And like I said, these are the meetings where people need to come and state their opinions and. Um, I know Nancy, Nancy worked for the postal service for a long, long time. Did you have something you wanted to add?
Make it short for now, but um, I made another contact. I, I told Andy that I have reached out to the district manager that oversees this year. Yes, and um, if he doesn't call in a couple of days, I will be following up with him. But over the weekend, I happened to reconnect and have that chance to tell Andy with the person. It, it's the person that oversees all the post offices in three, four, seven. So that's going to be somebody that I think we can get over here to sit down with us and go through all.
We just want to sit down and say, what can we do?
And it's, I mean, the post office box pricing is a natural thing. You're not going to change that. I mean, that's just.
Well, you're not going to change it, but we shouldn't be forced to pay for.
I understand what you're saying.
When we had some arguments you talked about and your comment about the post office being busy, you want it to be busy.
Oh, I know, that's what I'm saying. Okay. No, that's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying is, used to be it was. We have to have the post office boxes because it's not really busy, so that kind of justifies it. But now it's so busy all the time.
That it shouldn't be an issue.
But we will get somebody here over, over my dead body if we don't, okay?
That sounds, that sounds good to me, whatever, you know. Whatever you want to do, um, you know, that you can, if you want to make calls, but um, we. We'll wrestle this thing to the ground eventually, but I just can't make a promise about when that's going to be. And then we're just going to take a look at it and see what the right, what we feel is the right thing to do.
Okay, that sounds good. And then um, one more thing, I, I just, I kind of want to get your take on it. So you know the, the apartments that are down here, um, are you all aware that they're Airbnb and that there's people that live in their Airbnb?
We looked into that. I had the chief look into that when I heard it. Um, and he said that they don't. Okay, so they don't, they might not.
But I, I see it as being a, you know, a realtor, I kind of look at some of that stuff for my customers. And I see it come and I see it go. So I have a feeling there's people that are renting apartments in there that.
Are doing it on their own.
Be one person, they're doing it on their own. So when I see that, who wants to know that?
Um, I would say Darren.
We do, you want to know that? Well, it's, well, Airbnb kind of doesn't work that way. You have to actually rent it. And then they give you the exact locations, so I mean, I don't want to spend my money to.
No, no.
We wouldn't bring it to you to take a look at it when I see it on there. Okay, because I know I kept thinking, man, that's the kind of thing that we kind of talked about when they were going to.
Yeah, we're, we're pleased not to have that issue right now.
Right, right. Okay, and that's all I can think about now. Thank you very much.
Um, I think this is, Nancy, are you good? Okay, well, we look forward to, yeah, we look forward to meeting whoever it is that we need to sit down and talk to. And we don't call the shots here either, you know, the post office calls shots.
It's me that, when you go in there and they say, oh, you.
Well, they also used to tell people when the um Heritage Center was being built. That you, that, that the reason the post office boxes went up in rates was because of that. Just had nothing to do with the, the Heritage Center. That was paid without local taxpayer dollars. I mean, you know, and they were.
My street, is my street or street or an avenue for twenty-eight years. Some people say street. I think if I had been fixed, but I think my science is one thing and the post office has well.
Um, that, I think Orange County is the arbiter of that, is that right? Like. Um, street names, avenues, roads, Orange County.
So if you get with Mike, he may be able to look it up for you.
Yeah, I'll look it up. Whatever the post office says, I think is what it's supposed to be.
You know, it's whatever the, whatever the flat shows.
Yeah. Do, that there's a whole naming thing that has to be approved so that we can understand it over the radio. So, maybe that came after, but um, we have to submit every name for approval. To Orange County.
Thank you.
Sure. Um, but spread the word, we're working on it.
I would definitely do it and I'll keep an eye out on the website for everything.
We'll let you know.
And Nancy, if you can get that person here before I have to write that next check to the post office, I would appreciate it. Did anybody, somebody invite you here?
All right, um, consent agenda. We ready for that? Does anybody have any questions or anything they want to pull out?
I'll make the motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
I have one comment to make. Um, I looked at the report on the reading and math scores, am I right? And we beat the pants off Orange County and the state, so we should be very proud of that. Um, okay, any questions or comments on the consent agenda? All in favor? So Andy, it's um, town manager report, don't let Parker talk.
Parker, do you have anything you'd like to add? Leave it over there. I don't know.
Um, the only thing that I've, I've covered the other two items already, but the um. The twenty-two, twenty-four request from the town of Oakland to the, to the state appropriation. Uh, to be included in their, in their budget for the state. The town's going to request this year. An amount uh, for right now of six hundred fifty thousand dollars from the state. Total project is one point two five million or one million two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, which would be to, to do a septic to sewer uh project of the municipal facilities here. Um, that are currently served by sewer. Uh, they would be connected to central sewer and then it would pick up about fifteen existing residential. And commercial properties between here and the lift station. Um, and that's part of the uh. Efforts to eliminate septic seepage into Lake Apopka and the surrounding groundwater supplies. So this is the, this is how we received the two million uh from the state last year for the um. Uh, alternative water projects. This would be for a septic to sewer project for this year. That would be our request. We may, after speaking with the mayor. Add some additional septic to sewer, maybe another project to this, um, but we'll get with our uh. Representatives who helps us uh submit this to the state and we'll, we'll get back and let the council. And Parker, yep, Parker uh to um.
I just don't want to leave any money on the table, that's all.
We'll take another look at the total amount, but that will be our projects for this year's request to the state is a septic sewer. And we're going to start out with, or at least we're going to do the municipal buildings here, tie them into sewer. And that'll pick up an additional, allow us to pick up an additional fifteen residential and commercial properties as well, so. That's all I have this evening. Our, our human resources director did start today. We're going to give her a couple of weeks and then bring her to the next council meeting. Commission meeting um at our next meeting and I'll introduce her to the commission. Feel free to stop by the office. Um, and, and you can introduce yourself individually as well sometime in the next two weeks, if you would like. If not, well, she'll be here at the next meeting. That is all.
Uh, yeah, just reminder of this Friday, looking forward, we're excited. At the museum, so. And also this Thursday, there's uh lunch.
Unsafe.
So just two reminders, that's all.
Now, any, everybody, are you still able to go? If not, please let Elise know so we can make sure we have a full table. John Stane is going to do an economic. For us. He's a fascinating. All right, um, Rick. That's awesome. We have, we have one busy schedule. Um, it's out. So um, everything should be able, you should be able to put on your calendar. For the residents.
Um, I know Elise already sent it out. Frye County, um, lunching is nine twenty-one. And it's going to be a um, a tour of Brightland. It's going to be cool. Brightland.
Uh, what, now it's B part of Brightland, that's just a separate thing. Those are the unmanned vehicles?
Uh, I don't know, I'm not sure they plug it into that a lot.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's nine twenty-one. I know Elise already sent it out. And I know it, it was a mission just now, but Farmers Market is Thursday.
Oh, yeah. Excited about that.
No, that's not too much.
Well, they have Sunday.
I know, they're worried. Yeah, you figured.
So that's it. We're having the uh farmer's market here.
Yeah, well, we can do both. Farmers Market is way longer than two hours.
Yeah.
So, I plan to be out there first thing.
Thursday morning, what, how early does it start?
Ten.
Ten.
I think it's ten to two.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if we want to attend, we need to go early. Right, Jessica, ten to two?
I might be there anyways, so.
I'm not so sure what world we live in, ten o'clock and early.
You know, in my world is early. But I also want to point out that, um, you know, this is the first time that we have done this and please, please, please. Give Jessica and her team grace until they work out some kinks that are always inevitable with new events.
You're going to be fine.
It just, it, it doesn't matter how experienced you are, it doesn't matter how many you've done, you, you always learn something the first time out. So, um, those have got anything else? Mikey? I'm good. I'm looking forward to all the events that are coming up. We're also going to have um. Thank you. We're going to have. We will also have State of the Town on October sixteenth. I am here to bore you for forty-five minutes straight.
Once again.
Once again.
Couple of years, haven't it been?
So, I'm looking forward to it. I get a Cubanito. They can't have a State of the Town without Cubanitos. So anyway, thank you all very much. Um, Joseph.
All right, if our hearts and minds are satisfied, it is now seven twenty-three E M. And we can put the meeting.